All right, let's stand for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Heavenly Father, we just gather with you today and ask for your wisdom, guidance, and direction as we continue on with preliminary stages of setting our 22, 23 budget. Just grant us wisdom in each of the large, small, and in-between steps in this entire process. Lord, do we want to pray for the family of Kendrick Walker in this tragic loss yesterday? Friends and family and loved ones of his, I know, are grieving a lot today, Lord, and we just pray for your supernatural comfort over them and the days ahead. We just turn this meeting over to you now, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, for those of you that may not know or haven't heard, the young man that was here with us in court on Monday regarding a subdivision, Kendrick Walker was tragically killed in a very freak accident on Highway 67 just west of town. Happened yesterday evening, what, about 5:00? Something like...
4:00.
No way to explain something like that. His uncle is Jerry Walker, one of our city councilmen, and his father is Fred Walker, Fred that works at Pilgrim's Pride. I don't know any other members of his family, but just a very, very tragic event. Keep that family in your prayers in the days ahead. All right, today is a kind of a follow-up meeting to our budget talks with department heads last week on Thursday and Friday, and I don't know if this will be a final wrap-up meeting, but it's designed to just help us come together and finalize some of the bigger questions that are looming there, primarily a raise for county employees. If so, how much? How will it be calculated? And then consideration for the sheriff's request. He has requested some adjustments either pre or post-raise for his positions that he feels like are inadequate in light of local competition for staffing, for his jail, and for officers and the management staff over there. And I'm sure we'll have some other things to talk about. Barbara, before we just get started on any one of these topics, is there any particular order that you would like for me to take this in that will be beneficial for you?
I think we would start with the salaries because that's the bulk of the budget.
That's kind of what I intended, but if there was some building blocks that you wanted me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, you know, there seemed to be some fairly clear consensus, you know, and I asked you all to be thinking about this over the weekend in light of what the impact on the budget will be. We've talked about somewhere around a 10% raise, up to that amount anyway. And so after you've had a few days to think about this, let's kind of save the discussion regarding the sheriff's office for later. But how are you feeling today, knowing the impact that Barbara has given you on the overall budget regarding raises for employees and/or elected officials? Do you feel like there is a number, a way that you want to go about this? Is it a percentage raise? Is it a dollar amount raise? Is there a certain amount? We have talked about bringing up the folks on the lower end of that pay scale, bringing them up so that they get at least a minimum raise were some of the ideas that were brought up. So without any more preliminary discussion, that's all I really know to throw out there. But you know what the impact is on the overall budget, and this won't be a one-time impact. It'll be a long-term budget impact. And so as you deal with budgets in the future, you'll have to work in the amount of the raise going forward. And we know what the inflation is running, and every day our employees continue to see their wages erode in light of this drastic unprecedented inflation rate that we haven't seen in probably 40 years. So I do think that there is a significant adjustment that needs to be made this year. We've gone many years in the past without any raises at all during the tougher times, and we've been able to give some raises here in recent years. But I do know that our peers around us are basically of the same mindset and are working that into their budgets, and some of them even did these adjustments last year and with more coming this year. So that said, I'd love to hear what each of you are thinking as we work towards a decision on this, but obviously Barbara needs to know because there's a lot of payroll adjustments that will be made as part of this budget, and she needs to be able to start working that in now. So we don't need to delay that decision any longer than today, I don't believe.
Hey Barbara, what did you say the overall? I know we got this right here, what you gave us today, the 10% overall, including the sheriff's department and everybody, what would the overall cost be across the board?
730, was it? 745. 745, 595, and that's with the sheriff. 746.
Call it 750.
And I know we haven't discussed the fire department yet, I know it's coming. What was the, was it 300 on our part, what they're requesting from us right now?
That's the initial increase, it's right at just over 300,000 as we stair-step that in over a three-year period. I believe that the initial, in fact, I think I've got that figure here, I'll get for you in just a second here, but it's just over 300,000. And that's the first-year adjustment as we stair-step it up.
And next year, how much would be next time? Around 300,000?
I don't have that figure in there. I think we're working towards 40%, but the amount proposed for the county to pay the city in fiscal year 22, 23 budget is estimated to be 1.322, which is 34% of the estimated fire department budget. So the first year is the largest adjustment, and I think it comes in 3% increments after that, so you're going to be approaching well over, you know, a million six when it's, by the time it's done, somewhere a million five to a million six. I don't remember that number. I do have those screenshots from the presentation that he made the other day with PowerPoint. And Sheriff will be here at the next meeting. If you have any other questions about that, if you would like for me to provide you with those slides from the presentation that we all attended the other day, I'll send those to your email.
Judge Lee, is that a three-year phase in or a five-year phase in?
I think this was based on a three-year.
Okay.
Well, he gave us the choice of three or five-year, and I think that the assumption, well, the presentation that they made was three-year, but Ed said something like, "We could phase that in over five years if we, you know, if we needed to."
And that's with us still buying, giving them $300,000 for another engine?
Well, that's not in this year's budget.
No, it would be in the near future, Lord.
It'll be a few more years.
It's going to be over three years because they, you know, they have their plan on it yet.
All right, need your thoughts, guys, once you're ready to throw out a motion.
10% across the board for the majority of the departments, not including the sheriff's department. I know their jail needs quite a bit of an increase, and I know the sheriff's department itself needs one too. And I like to, you know, not to go over budget with it, but I'm leaning towards probably the 12% increase on the sheriff's department and the jail to bring them up a little closer to what they need to be, and 10% across for all the rest of county employees and the other departments. That's what I feel.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, you want to throw something first?
See what they say.
Save the best for last.
Yeah. Like I said, I know that the sheriff's department, they're going to get them up there because they're losing people all the time, and I don't hate seeing them lose patrolmen and all that and for not getting enough pay, but it is a significant amount of money. But, you know, I just... The 10% across the board is good, and did that's, you say 12%? What you saying?
I was thinking 12% because I know with those figures right there, we'll still be under budget, and we're not going to have to be dipping into general funds stuff every year, and I don't want to have to do that. So I want to make sure we're bringing enough revenue to cover all this, and we'll have a little bit left over for cushion and cover the fire department and the raises that we'll be giving out, so.
Well, let me caution you there a moment. When you say coming in under budget, if you keep your tax rate the same this year based on property appraisals, I don't believe you've got enough increase in additional revenues that will come in during the budget year to cover these wage increases. Is that a fair statement?
Well, without any increase to the sheriff, we're about right.
What you said, we brought in 1.1.
1.1, but right, but we're looking at 746 at 10%, and then 300,000 for the fire department. So that puts us just over a million dollars.
But the additional 200 or something thousand bringing in off revenue from the sheriff's department.
From the sheriff's department, right. Now, we can have that, we can use that to reach the 12. Yes. But just keep in mind, I hesitate for us to build a budget based on federal inmates.
I understand that.
But that would get us breakeven this year, but there's other things that we've talked about. We may not, we may still have a deficit budget, that's what I'm saying. But it would be closer to a balanced budget than if we made it some of these higher percentages, obviously.
And when you're saying balanced budget, you're saying with the property tax values that we have seen this year, if the court were to keep the tax rate the same, it's going to produce a given amount of money. In my opinion, if you give that 10% raise, you increase the fire compensation as well as some of these other increases that we've seen, we're going to be lucky if we can pay for those increases out of the increase that we would net if we keep the tax rate the same. Now, there's been sentiment in the past of lowering that tax rate a little bit each So I still say you're not going to cover it all with just the increase from the appraisals.
I don't think you'll leave.
If you do, it'll be just by the skin of your teeth. Now, right now, you're, you know, in an inflationary environment, are we on the verge of recession? Don't know. Something's going to break here at some point, I don't know when that will be, but the point is, once you lock in these wages, you've got to figure out ways to be able to pay for them. And will those come from unpleasant tax increases in the future? Will it come in the form of your inability to lower the tax rate in the future? It'll put pressure on the jail to keep those federal inmates coming in, and hopefully that's the income stream we'll be able to benefit from in the years ahead, but there are never any guarantees, and that's one that we're enjoying right now. We're talking about expanding that jail with some American Rescue Plan funds, and if you do that and we continue to provide a good service, the hope is certainly there that you'll continue to have those federal inmates, but things can change quickly. And then, again, you'll be back to possibly having to consider tax increases. Now, I don't give that speech to say we can't afford to give raises, I just want you to understand the reality of the decisions that we're making. I also support a 10% raise, by the way.
Well, just looking at the housing market, I know we're growing rapidly every year. I know we're going to be, I don't see it slowing down anytime soon, so I mean, that's a good thing as well.
You don't see what's slowing down?
I don't see the housing market slowing down. We're building houses like crazy, and more people are coming to Titus County every day. That's a good thing for us.
It is, and I have a different opinion of housing values, how much longer they can continue to go up. I don't know that it's indefinite, but I do think that Titus County is blessed to be in a position within the state of Texas where we will continue to see folks come to town and more houses being built. That part I do agree with.
Jimmy, what do you think about it?
Well, just sitting here, I do know that the sheriff's department is way behind. The 12% is, that's scary, but I do think that everybody needs raised. I mean, it's, when I rounded the corner down here today, I looked and guessed at Super 1, 467. We've never seen prices like that, and people can't keep surviving without, you know, without I'm still leaning towards a 10% on, across the board. I don't know about the sheriff's department. It just, that's scary to go 12%.
Keep in mind, he's asked for 17.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I know. But I definitely know that we need to go 10% across the board, I think.
All right, why don't we tackle that part first, then we'll come back on layer two? So it's a bare minimum 10%?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Anyway, I agree with you. I say 10% all the way across for everybody, sheriff's department and everything. It's pretty good, it's a pretty good raise for everybody this year, and it'll help everybody tremendous. We could also, you know, hope we can plan next year to, if we need to help the sheriff's department just a little bit more, we can do it next year. We always try to do something for them every year. We can give raises, when we can, we'll do that. So I'll go with 10% across the board for everybody, and we can let, Tim can get his in a lump sum if he chooses to, and he can divide that as he wishes for his patrolmen, so.
The 10% salary increase, if you go with that across the board, results in the sheriff's total budget going up by 351,000. He requested at 17%, that figure would have jumped to...
I think it was 168,000.
What was that figure?
Not according to this right here, I think it was closer to 500,000.
At 15%, it's 526.90, so.
What's the round code to you without benefits? The numbers here on this page are prepared for you.
Okay. And that's the way I want to see it, because you've got to put that in there. We've got to pay payroll taxes, we've got to pay contributions to retirement, so that needs to be in there when you look at that. So again, I think he, I think his request was closer to 600,000, wasn't it, with all in?
What was that figure you give us first, Frank?
The...
His, it, you said it was 300 and something thousand?
The overall, if you did a 10% raise across every single county employee, including the sheriff's office, with their retirement taxes, all of their additional compensation that rises as you raise wages, would be 746,000.
Yeah.
Of that, at 10%, of that, nearly half of that is the sheriff's, 351,000.
350, okay.
If you were to go 12% with the sheriff's office, that'd jump it up another 80,000 from 351 to 421. 15% would jump it up from 351 to 527, 527. So just to keep, just to keep all that in the back of your mind as you're pondering this, but again, we can come back to that in a second. It sounds to me like at least three out of the four of you are in agreement with a 10% hike for all employees, and whether we add another layer on top of that to the sheriff, we're going to get to that in round two.
Yeah, is that good for now?
But I'm still waiting on Commissioner Number Three to give me his thoughts, because that'll help us all.
10% would be good across the board, what I said a while ago.
You're happy with a minimum of 10%. What about the idea that we discussed the other day of having the employees on the lower end to receive a minimum dollar amount increase of at least, and that sweet spot was about $3,000 a year, Barbara, is that right? And you've got those figures there in front of you. And how many employees did that, did that impact?
I think there's 14.
So 14 of the 135, where are we now, 135 employees? And in order for, what's the threshold whereby an employee receiving less than that would not even yield a $3,000 raise? Is it a...
$14.45 cents an hour.
Now, in my opinion, that still leaves a lot of folks down there at the bottom end of the scale that are not reaping much benefit from this 10%. Barbara looked at this and kind of studied it and felt like that was a good placement point there for those employees that were on that lower end. So would you be willing to have a floor on these raises where everybody would get at least that given amount of raise? In other words, you yield a little bit more than 10% on about 14 employees, and it doesn't amount to much, I got to tell you.
It does hurt that lower end. The higher end's what props the best on the deal.
Well, and with just helping 14 people...
That's where we're trying to get people to stay with us and hire in at too, so.
I don't agree with that. I don't think it's fair for the one that's been there a long time to see that. They're going to be wondering why, you know. I think it's kind of a shock to them, you know, to do that. I don't agree with that, so.
You don't agree with having a floor?
No.
Any idea what's the biggest amount of annual benefit that the absolute lowest employee on the totem pole, and we don't need to name names, but you can direct us to some of those lower wages, just so I can quantify you?
I think the position in the election office. The part-time election, it's not field. That person would get, well, just at the 10%.
Well, they're identified for you there in orange.
Well, I'm looking at the part-time. See the part-time one there?
Mm-hmm. But isn't that right? Am I reading this right?
The next closest is 13, I think.
The orange are the ones that are impacted.
Yes, but then the part-time people are listed here too. I'm assuming, and I need to know for sure what y'all would like, I assume that the number of hours that they work would be a similar rate as they, you know, the percentage of hours as we've had in the past.
I personally don't think that anybody would have a problem with having that floor in there to bring these folks up a little higher, and maybe these, some of these are brand-new employees. I don't know all of these names here. I don't know that it's going to make a big difference one way or another. How does the rest of y'all feel about that? That is a decision I'd like to make.
With the, putting the 3,000 in there?
Yeah, if there's a minimum dollar amount that you want to achieve for these 14 that are on the lower end of the pay scale, or if you're comfortable with just applying a 10%.
Lower end amounts to like $300 on one, it's less than $300 a person, up to just maybe $75, $80. And this is 14 people, yeah. I would do that. I think it'll help you too when we lose people, we're trying to hire back.
Okay, I think I've got one answer. We're going to go with 10% as a bare minimum increase. Barbara, I'm waiting to see if there's anybody interested in adjusting that floor, or if you're okay with just a flat 10%.
Judge, can we ask questions? Is that possible?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know that two of my employees might go to the auction, Elaine Rogers...
I'd rather you not give names.
So I know there's two that make 13, and I have 30, I'm going to call it 14, I mean 13.85. So what you're saying is that we're going to, you know, want to raise it up to the 14.45 a part percent, or we want to raise it to give them 10% or more, which, I'm not, I asked my question, but I know some of mine. 13, 13.85 an hour.
Well, the issue is, if you give a 10% raise as opposed to a dollar figure, in years past, we've given $50 a month across the board, $100 a month, and so everybody on that scale kind of rose like that. You do a percentage, and that kind of goes like this, you get the higher-paid employees all get a nice bump, you know, several thousand, $5,000, $6,000 potentially up there at the high end. Person down there at the lower end is getting, you know, 2,500 to 2,700 to 2,800 raise as opposed to, you know, something a little bit higher.
I would essentially love to see the lower people all get up there.
And I understand that, and I respect that, but there are maybe some reasons why people are at this lower end. Maybe they're a brand-new employee, and comparing them to a 10-plus-year employee, maybe that 10% deviation is fair. So we've got to look at it both ways.
I did have a 13-hour employee that was in here for 30 months, and I have a 13.85 employee that's 50% in there, so I didn't, I couldn't consider anything.
Yeah, that's a good example.
Yes, and last year, I got my money in one of some that believe, thank you guys, and I was able to disperse it how I saw fit, because that 13.85 employee last year was only leaving 11.88 last year. So I was able to bump her up or increase the fee, you know, higher across the board, but I mean, I completely understand what you're saying, I'm 100% on board with what they're saying. I was confused about the floor rate, what, you're talking about $3,000 a month, the 10% and so on.
Yeah. If you do the $3,000 for those lower-end employees there versus the 10%, it's 14 cents an hour, they'd make more than getting just a 10% raise. It'd jump that $13 to 14.30, you know, with 10%, make them 14.44 with the $3,000.
Say that again, say that again.
So if you're going to pay somebody $13, give them 10% raise, that'd be 14.30 an hour. If you give them $3,000 across the board and let that divide that by the year, you're going to have 14.44 an hour. 14 cents difference an hour.
John, what does that do to an employee that's been, let's say, it's been there for five years, it's making $14, something like that?
Where they get 10%, you know, 10% raise.
So does it kind of, I mean, my question is, and my concern is, does it close the gap on, you know, let's say, you have a 13-hour employee that just started, and then I have an employee that's been five years making not much more, 14, does that bring that person that's just started way up here, just gives the...
It does now, because it'd probably be several years before you get any kind of raises like this ever.
I mean, I'm not concerned, you know, we have employees...
I mean, this is probably 10 years of raises added together just this year. I mean, there's only been one raise since I've been here four years. We voted one time, gave everybody $1,500 a year. They think we give raises every year, but think about it.
I'd like to hear what you had to say. I'd like to hear what, what you had to say.
Do you see my impression, what it's about now? Correct? If you're a $14 an hour person, one that's been there five years versus your $10 an hour?
I mean, I've got one that I just hired a long year ago, 13 an hour, and I have one that's been here for five, six years at the 14, 20, 14, so that's not a whole lot more. And I think, you know, if we, I'd just like to, you know, predict this across the board percentage, whether she can raise that amount a little bit, like a percent across the board to everybody, but to, to raise it up to any amount to give incentive to those employees that have been here a long time in the county. And I, and I heard that Mr. Parchman, that it's just, I, I just don't like that system that, I mean, he does make the story, you're going to give them a big raise across, you know.
Again, it's, it, there's no big raises here for those low-end people.
I guess if I think they're increased versus someone that's been here a longer time, I don't, I don't think that's even...
Oh, you're talking about 10 to 20 cents an hour, potentially, yeah.
We also talked about the department heads could take that whole dollar amount, 10% for your employees. You can divide up however you choose, if it, you know, I mean, because Sheriff's Department may want to do that, we'll find out, so we discussed it.
I want to point to six things, people that you're talking about, you know, the percentage of hours, how long they've been with the county, do you know that at all?
Well, she's just giving us an example of somebody that's been there only three months is darn near making as much as somebody who's been there seven years. Of course, that seven-year employee comes from a period in time, darker days in the county when we were paying chicken feed.
How many of you are, are you talking about? How long have they been with the county?
I have two that have been there, I have one that's been there for almost a year, John B., which makes 17, and I have one that's been there, makes 17, has only been there three months. And the other three, four, get more complicated, have been with the county significantly. So the figure's out, it has more than seven years, two years to the top of 70.
Question for you, how long have they been?
Yeah, and looking at these names, I don't know the tenure of these that are marked in orange, I really don't.
We never have no rhyme or reason to what, why people get paid what they do. Somebody comes into office, they're like, who's been paying these people? It just depends on how it went through.
A lot of it has to do with the new employee comes in and they have to be paid the same rate that that previous person was paying because there's no money remaining in the budget, when probably they should have been brought in at a higher wage. It's just part of the inconsistency of county government, in my opinion.
Could something be done, maybe stimulus, maybe that's on, you know, someone brought in, this 14.45 level, maybe? And then, for the year, rather than, if you hire someone, you know, with a wage of at least $16 an hour, and you hire a new person and give them that, that's what's been going on, that's fine, and then...
It would definitely be a better system than what we've had for the last 20 years, definitely.
So set raises or heavy raises or, you know, whatever, we probably solve some of the problems that we have with the inequity in the offices.
It, it, it would be, it would be a good idea, in my opinion.
Be easier on the department heads too. You wouldn't have to say, "I'm going to try." You would know when you, it's like a teacher, you know what you're going to make that year when you hire your five-year, two-year.
And, and you weren't here at our talks the other day, another idea was that you give a 10, you see what that 10% within that department does for that department. Let's say it produces $8,000 and you give it to that department head and you say, "You allocate it however you want." Then you've got to explain to those employees why they're getting 7% and why these are getting 12%. And how do you make that shift to a step? I don't know, if you're in agreement that your wages within your department are already out of whack, how do you get that step system initiated? Do you say, "Well, we're having to lower you back down here by a dollar and a half to get you back where you belong and we're going to raise you up"? It's, it's messy.
I think if you're a long-time employee, who keeps nerves, where they're at on that scale, then probably they should be ready to lobby you. But, bringing in new people, that's where, that's where the inequity, and, because you can, you can have $16 here, if you hire someone, you don't have to know if they'll work out, you're going to get $16 an hour. I think that, you know, possibly the ones that have been here, prove that they are valuable, the employees, I think that they're, I think that you should leave them, when you, if you brought something in, like longevity, harsh that phrase, then I think that they should be led with that step. But, but that, that should be, you know, that should be something that you can think more about.
I totally agree with you. I think that there's a better way to go about this that would take a lot of the uncertainty and inequity out in the future.
What causes a lot of professional jealousy? Because, you know, someone chooses to get hired in another office, and they're making one that's someone who's been there seven years, or put by hand, or...
But then again, that person that was hired may have come from another county doing the same thing, and they've got 20 years in that same, so you start up, sorry, you're back to a, you're a neophyte here because you've come to work for Titus County. You create, there is no perfect scenario. There is no perfect scenario, and, and anybody that can come up with them, that's the one we should go with.
Have we told sheriff's office employees or other person in the whole county, whether 60-something?
64 of them.
And how many is for the whole county?
135.
Hmm, not quite, but that's, it's about in relationship to the total wages, maybe somewhere in the 40s, 45%. 60, you said, and I guess head count, it's right at almost half, 45%. No, I appreciate those comments, I, I agree, there's a, there's a better way, but how do you go about it? And when you initiate it, that'll be messy.
And in my personal, at least for me, I'd rather focus on my full-time versus my part-time, so, I'd rather take care of my full-time employees and lay off a part-time employees, you know, full-time ones that have been enjoying the, you know...
So I'm not sure what you're saying. How, what are you saying, what are you saying you want us...
Bring up the part-time rate, I'm so concerned about bringing up that rate as being the full-time rate.
Okay. Would it help you if we just gave you a lump sum and told you to allocate it as you see fit? Or does that create, does that make you the bad guy in your department?
I'm good with whatever we order, without...
No, I'm just asking you, would it help you to be given a lump sum of money to allocate as you see fit?
I've never done it that way, I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure, I have my own...
That'd be your option.
You could...
I would actually, I actually say, my, my, it's not, it's not fair wages, like being, like, being deferred for all periods of time, but that's why some of you, you know, did, did, I don't know, again, why I shared 2% or 3%. That's why you didn't calculate the tax rate or the way you did 2% or 3%. Because you were hired in at a higher rate before my time, so therefore, I've got to get my, 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 where I can...
So you didn't suffer any backlash doing it that way?
I did, but, I mean, I explained, that's what I was explaining to you, but, I mean...
If you were given that opportunity again, would you, you would appreciate the ability to allocate as you saw fit?
Yes.
I'm grateful, I'm grateful for whatever.
I'd like to say that too.
I know y'all are going to back for a chance, I mean, I'm grateful, as far as that, I'm not going to complain in any way, whether it's...
Well, your comments helped me make my decision, so that's why I'm listening to what you say.
I'm less concerned with bringing my, you know, better part-time employees in there, you know, better, they're, they're a couple, but I mean, I don't want to talk it out, you know, I have to, I'd rather focus on my full-time...
So I'm going to ask you once, once again, would it be of benefit if we gave you the flexibility to give you a lump sum for you to allocate an across-the-board 10% raise in whatever percentages you wanted amongst your employees?
I guess 10% is 10, I've got the four employees and one part-time, so 10% raise, can you give me that?
No. No. Yeah, and I give you that lump sum, and I give you a lump...
And if you wanted, if you wanted to leave your part-time at whatever it is, $15 or $10 or whatever it is, if you wanted to leave it and do your increase with your others, then, then you, you've got that option to do it now.
I'm good with that, yes.
Okay.
I'd rather see y'all do that as well.
I like that, that idea.
I guess, I was asking, you know, if 10% for the employees I have, unless they're one employee that won, where about 200, you can take that raise and apply it to the other four, is that what...
If your total wages in your department are $100,000, we're going to give you $10,000 to work with. And you can give 6% to this person, you can give 12% to these two, however you want to do it.
That, that's your decision that you make, is to who you want to give.
But if we decide to do that, we need to go with it countywide and leave it up to the, leave it up to the diplomacy of each of these department heads.
Yeah, because it's just easy to say, "Everybody gets 10%."
And you'd say, you'd say, "I'm taking my money and I'm giving everybody in my department 10%," or you can sit down with each one and say, "This is what I'm doing."
Are they backing that down, what my employees make right now, whether they give 10% of what this employee makes early, 10% of what this one makes?
How else would you do it?
No, that's what I'm asking, I guess we said...
That's the only way I know of to do it. We, we take your departmental total, times, one times 10% and allocate that to you, and you tell us how to plug in the numbers.
I just want to get a clear understanding of that, that's...
Well, I personally like that, I think that it gives you the flexibility to do that if you can stomach the, the backlash from those that don't get as much and you're able to explain to them, "Hey, you're getting this much because you're relatively new here and I've got to do something for my long-term employees that came from a time in the past when we didn't pay squat around here, and we've got to get them up into 2022." I mean, it hadn't been long where we've been starting, you know, we're, the lowest people we've got here, man, it hadn't been that long where we had lots of people making single digits, lots of people. Okay, how do you, would that be a nightmare, Barbara, for, for you in payroll?
I would just need to set a date, and I need to have that back for me, and then I have to check their numbers and make sure what they turned into didn't really add to the amount that you gave them. So, may I, may I ask a question?
Sure.
How long would it take you to make this decision?
I would say it's a 20-year, I mean, it's a 20-year.
It's a lot of time, sure, that would be, we've helped you, we've...
I mean, it would take a long time.
It took me a weekend. I mean, we said today, anything that's not bad, I have to do it by then or two, or we said anything that's not bad, how do we do it?
I don't have a huge support, like, with sheriffs or...
Well, exactly, it's going to take long.
Right, I mean, I can make it with somebody that's after it, or whatever.
I'd like to see you just raise, you feel, I don't think it's...
How would you feel about that? Yeah?
I would just be like them, like, in our conversations about how it's allocated. I would have to think long, long, I love that, but, you know, a weekend, I, you know, let me talk more.
And of course, the, the 10...
Very tedious, very tedious thing, figuring payroll and all, it's a, it's a... So, Jean, the twistboard would be good, that is, like, there's a week, it's nicely, not a...
Do you think that we could email each one of them an Excel spreadsheet? I, I don't want to create too much, pre-filled in with, here's your three, or here's your eight employees within your department, here's their current rate, here's 2,080 hours, here's their current total wages with a grand total, and then right next to that, you give them a grand total that's 10% higher and say, "You plug in, you can slate with these rates all you want," and cross, put it out there and add it up, and as long as it's within that, as long as it's right there...
That's why I said, we'll send it, it's a break, so, so thank you, no, that information. Thanks for the thought here, just the dynamics here.
Well, and for, and for a department head that says, "Oh, my gosh, I, I don't think I could handle that kind of pressure, I'm just going to go with a straight 10% across the board," you have the flexibility to do that.
That's why your department actually spends a lot of pressure, not giving it to you.
Well, it, it is rather novel within county government. We haven't done it that way, most folks aren't used to it, but...
Either way, I'm happy, I mean, that's, you know, we did a percent across the board, or you did the percentage and gave it to us, either way is pretty good.
Well, every one of you have very good, valid comments, I, I appreciate them all, it helps me make my decision. That's where I stand. Without, without moving on to, towards talking about the sheriff's office, that's what I would like to see, is a 10% raise across the board, giving each department head the flexibility to allocate that bulk 10% amongst their employees in any way that they seek it.
I think that's a good idea.
I think it is.
It is good too.
Yeah, you get the best of both worlds.
I hope I haven't created for you a monster in, in, in doing that, but if, you know, if there's any way that I can help generate some of those worksheets, I, I will.
Judge Lee, I have experience doing this, I've done it at school for years and years where we gave money to principals, allowed them to allocate, not to teachers, but to all of their support staff. Frankly, it just comes down to the ability of that department head to calculate the numbers. If we send them the Excel spreadsheet, it should make it a lot easier for them.
Well, all they have to, all they have to do is plug in a new rate in that Excel spreadsheet and see what that grand total looks like until they find a balance that they're happy with. Suzie and Bob and Joe, if I change their rate to this much, I can see what their percentage increase is actually, and I can make sure it fits within the parameters given, given to me. And that way, it's just a matter of them punching in different numbers in a what-if scenario.
I do want to tell y'all that when, when Melissa Stevens did that last year, she did it very excellent, y'all, she was thoughtful, she worked hard on it, I believe you that it took you a weekend, and that's why I asked how much time, because you had several employees and several who were, their wages were just, they're just despair...
And she was brand-new and she handled it.
Yeah.
It's not a burden, it was, it was lots of prayer and lots of, you know, my...
Okay. All right, sounds like we're in agreement, we've, that, that's several big decisions all within there. I'll, so that's, I think is our decision, Barbara. We'll move on to talking about, again, the, the sheriff's office. Thank you, appreciate your input. And, and what we just talked about here is exactly what I would have proposed we do to the sheriff's department if you gave him anything less than that grand request he asked for of 17.8, which he already had all those individual rates figured for all of his department. And so if you give him less than that, we're certainly not going to say, "You have to do this with that lesser amount of money," you're going to, you're going to do it. And so, if, if that, does that make sense? So if you give him, whatever you give him, if you say, "Okay, we've gone with 10% across the board, including you, but we're giving you that lump sum, you allocate it any way you want." You can pay your jail guys more, you can pay your sergeants more, you can pay your captain more, whatever you want to do with it. The question is, what is the appropriate amount to do? We, I've heard some comments that I'm comfortable with 10%, including the sheriff's office. I personally would like to see a bit more than that, because he's given you a good reason for it, he is putting additional pressure there with federal inmates, which is bringing some more money, and he is steadily losing employees, which fortunately, he's been able to cover the holes, but it is a, it does make that job tougher.
Let's meet him in the middle at 13.5, what about that? He's asking for 17.8.
I think he'll be happy with whatever he gives him.
He will be, I know he will be.
He will be happy with whatever he gives.
I mean, but he does have some obstacles there.
Yeah.
Will he be happy, real happy, or very happy?
Yeah, that's more like it. Flaws meter.
At the same time, he can take that lump sum, put it where it's well needed. At the same time, he can take that lump sum, put it where it's well-needed, and I think that's the best thing that's going to help him overall, do it that way for him especially.
Can he achieve that with 10%? Jeff?
No, I'm leaning towards the 12% myself. I mean, that's where I feel like he should be on, and that's going to help him, and it may not be what he wants all over, but, you know, I think it's a good raise.
Well, let's quantify those two ideas right there. At 12%, it takes his overall increase from 351 to 421, so there's $80,000. If you go to 13.5%, you would be at 56, 66, 76, 86, 96, 15,000, 16,000. About 470,000 compared to 351, so there's about 120 increase. So you go from that 80 up to 120 if you go to 13.5. And once again, you all will need to be good diplomats, being able to explain to the rest of the employees why you chose to do this, because you've done it before and here we're talking about doing it again. Are you prepared to do that, and do you feel like your argument is justified?
Judge Lee, I have something that Sheriff and Ms. Johnson sent to me late yesterday. The way the current scale is without the 10%, just the scale that we put in place just last year, with that scale, there are only 22 employees that are due to receive raises, because the rest of them are already topped out from that scale. So we have 22 employees who've been here a long time and done a good job for us, and I think that's one of the reasons why the sheriff put together those increases. And as we discussed here today, you know, those are those who have people who've been in our office for a long time or who have experienced, those are the critical employees. And so I think that that's one of the reasons why he worked so diligently to put all that together for you.
Yeah, he did a good job, he was very detailed with his work, and he admitted he was stretching some of those positions, but he felt justified in doing all those.
What do you think, Dana?
Like I said, that's the repercussion you're going to get when you do, I know when you do that, you're going, people are going to ask, "Why didn't we get a 12.5% raise," or whatever, 13%? And, well, first of all, I wouldn't want that, do what they do in the first place.
That's right. I've heard that from several employees, and they say, "This is a whole different department than what I'm in, I'm not going to be a policeman."
Like I said, they got...
So that's pretty justified.
They got them on the...
They're being competitive.
...at jail, and it's just, I wouldn't want to work in it. I went in it and I told them I didn't want to come back.
Yeah.
I just, no wind is entered or nothing else, and it's just, it's a different kind of, we call it, environment than we do out here. Well, the taxpayers, do they expect the same, or, you know, they may think that they didn't need it, or, you know, according to how much, how much you need the sheriff department? That's the main deal.
And that's why they elected you to make that decision.
That's right.
Jimmy, what do you think? Maybe stay at 10? Would you go 12? I still think we can tighten that budget and make it, yeah.
Let him finish, but I'd like to hear from Cheryl.
Go ahead, Sheriff, I'm David.
When you, you know, were saying you didn't want to work down there, they do work shift work because they're expected to be there 24 hours a day.
Holidays, or whatever.
Holidays, I mean, they don't get off when we get off, and they're going to give us a lot of holidays out there, and they don't get those.
You know, they can't take their time off like we can.
We can't plan anything around them, because about half of them never can come. They're sleeping or they're working.
I just think that, I would not want to do shift work, no matter where, you know, there's just many, so I think a lot of people might kind of complain, you know, will think that on all day.
Right, that's, yes. I work 12 hours shifts too.
No sunshine in the jail, every, the 12 hours.
That's right, yeah.
I could probably go with a 12, but, and I'm not, not so concerned about what the other, other people are concerned with about it, because a lot of them don't realize, just like Cheryl said, what they go through and what they have to do. I mean, I've got, I've got guys that, they've got comp time, they've got, you know, time off that they can take, and a lot of, a lot of sheriff's guys, if they do accumulate comp time, they can't take it, because they hadn't got anybody to replace them. So, I mean, I could, I could probably go with the 12 for the sheriff's department.
Well, we all know that there is more turnover within that department percentage-wise, by far, by far, not by a little bit, than any other department within the county. What does that tell me? Well, it tells me a lot of things. Tells me just what Cheryl was saying is true, that's tough. It tells me that there is a lot of need everywhere for law enforcement. There's a lot of reasons why people don't want to stay in law enforcement, and there are a lot of reasons why people are always looking for that next step, to go somewhere else if they perceive a better benefit or better compensation. So it all comes down to what's the market value of each one of those positions. I think you need to make an adjustment here. I'm glad to hear all of this. I told you all the other day, 15% was my high end. I'm still okay with 15%. Sounds like that's probably a little out of the realm of possibility, which I would certainly fight for no less than 12%. And honestly, I like Fitch's idea of splitting the difference with him.
I like that idea too, since input, you know, they didn't really know how people really thought about it, and Cheryl brought in a good point, and I've always felt that way, so I'm a lot with John.
Well, I don't know how much y'all suffered the last time we made an extra consideration for the sheriff's office. I didn't personally, nobody, zero, nobody complained to me.
I never gave anything for him about it, so.
But, you know, my guys, you know, all of them are fairly new, a couple of them, about three of them have been there a year, and a little bit about eight, nine months, and, you know, they was happy to get what they come in with when they hired in. They never said anything about, they worried about theirself, not nobody, you know, didn't worry about other people. And so, like I said, I just, I'm with John, myself.
13.5. Sounds like that's three of us. Jeff, can you level that?
I really like the 12, but I mean, I'll...
Jimmy, can you, can you support that, Jimmy?
That was a 13.5, put it up at 470.
Maybe a little more.
About 473.
473. Yeah, I could probably go with that.
And that's 473 compared to 351 that they would get with a straight 10%.
And we're still going, are we going to do it that way for...
Yes.
All of these, or are we going to let him do the lump sum?
No, you absolutely have to. He's got such a wide variety of raises that he's asking for. You give him that 3.5%, 13.5%, and then he can go back and say, "Well, I didn't get this much, so I'm going to have to take that away from my whatever guys on the scale," and...
The reason I was asking, I think that's the way it needs to be. I think he needs the discretion of saying, "This is what I'm going to give this one, this is what I'm going to give this one." And I, to me, that's the only fair way that can be done, is these department heads need to, I think that will help us even things out more so than anything else.
Well, maybe if you continue a steady commitment to doing it that way in the future, you'll eventually get these rates in line, I think.
I do need to caution you, I need to comment, 473, 473,000 includes the benefits that go with that. So when I give the sheriff the number, it's not going to be 473,000, it's going to be less than that. I want to make sure you're aware of that, in case he were to call you and say, "Well, Barbara didn't give me what y'all talked about in court." I won't be giving him that number, I'll give him a lesser number, less the benefits. And then we'll add those I'm talking about.
Very good point, and the 17.08 also included those benefits as well.
That's the difference between his 468 without benefits to 600,000.
Okay. So the way that you will word it to him is, there's a 10, there's a 13.5% salary increase in total for your, for your wages over there.
And then allow him to allocate it.
And we're only talking about that 473 so that this court understands the overall budget impact.
I would like to, our two incumbents, to get their input on this, what they think about it. I mean, they're fixing to be sitting up here with us.
Very good idea, very good idea.
I'd like to hear their comment.
Hey, James, cut that arrow.
I'm good with the, with the, they can split it differently, uh, the briefs that they take, uh, kind of way they're running, uh, holidays, people don't understand that. You want to go through our protection, you want to go through the least department, if you don't have those, then you have another big problem. I, I strongly feel that, I do like, my opinion on it, does it give it to the department head? Does that put some pressure on the department head? Yes, it does, but, actually, that's being a good judge, I mean, I don't know what's best for her department, my Stevens department, I don't know what's best for y'all's department. They know who's doing the job, and who's doing the best for them, who they need to give their opportunity to keep. It's as well as you're committed to know who you want to keep in your rate, when you do across the board, 10%. I would feel like you give reward those that are working the best, you reward everybody for whatever job they're doing, whether it's a good job or a bad job, they're getting rewarded the same, and I'm just totally business, but I'm a better person, you know, the job, thank you for me.
No, that's worth a lot, so we're not setting you up with a problem you don't feel like?
No.
Good deal, all right. Well, for the record, for those, anybody listening, sounds like our judge-elect Cooper is thinking along the same lines as we are, and that makes me feel better. Possible commissioner, what do you think?
I think you're, I'm not right against you, but I believe that all of y'all are very agree, I think you have to pay your people, the key people, that just, with the sheriff's department, or people work here, pay some money, operate a business or anything, which is a county business, and if any reason you give, it would be appreciated by all of you. And the way to spread it out, I really think that the people who've been there as long as, it ought to be over the, whoever's on the edge of the department or something like that, get, they're getting out of the car, so, just like you said, the new hires, they shouldn't get a raise as much as the other people, but I know it's hard to do, you know, it's hard to bring it all back, and it's 10, 10, right across the board, it's not a bad idea, but it's probably going to be a fine raise.
Thank you. You know, and circumstances change, and you know, the next year, and I hope you all will remember this, when, when some of us are long gone from here, that maybe this is the way of the future, that you give these departments a set amount, and maybe over, over the years, that will help them to arrive at better equity. You know, and another reason to give them that flexibility, maybe you've got a new person that you just hired, and you've got an older person that's developed an attitude, as it were, and you might want to give that new per, brand-new person more of a raise than that person that's been around, that's starting to slack off. I mean, who knows? There's a lot of things to take into consideration, but who better to know those little details than that department head? Okay, well, it sounds like we've got consensus here, so Barbara, part two of our conversation would be a 13.5% raise to the sheriff's office to be allocated at his discretion. All right, thanks, everyone, for your input. What's next on your list, Barbara? We've got, as far as the sheriff's, I mean, as far as the fire protection contract, I gave you that figure there. Now, we have not approved a contract yet, so that may be one of those figures that you're not quite ready to plug in, because these guys have got to approve that fire contract, they've got to approve the amount, they've got to approve whether it's rolled out in three or five years, and then we'll plug in that, that figure.
When can we make that decision? When will y'all make it?
Well, at the next, at the next meeting, 12 days from now, Sheriff, I'm, no, I'm Sheriff, Chief McCray will be here to make his bi-monthly report, and then right after that, we will, I have on the agenda to consider and possibly approve the fire protection contract. Now, I don't know that that fire protection contract document itself will be prepared by the city, I've asked for that by that meeting, but there's going to be a lot of people that, like Kerry Wooton and possibly outside help, legal help, and their, possibly their HR department, to come up with that wording. Now, will they be able to have a dollar amount and say, "We'll have the final contract for you to actually sign at a later date"? I don't know. Maybe we'll have it all by the next meeting, maybe we won't, but I sure think that we'll have it close enough where you've got a ballpark figure that's within $50,000 one way or another to plug into your budget.
That is just one number, but, so it's an easy thing to add at any time. I would like to request the opportunity to read that, because I have some questions about how they are getting to, you know, their gross number that they're asking us to pay more. I have some questions about what that includes.
Sure.
And so, I mean, I know that that's what you, you, but we'll look at it too, and I'd like to look at that, just for future knowledge, so that I'll be, you know, be able to assist our new fire protection.
And I'll ask Ed if he thinks it's realistic to have that here in 12 days, I just, I just don't know.
Right.
But I totally agree, we all need to be familiar with what's in there.
And just, I think it's a question about the, maybe, so there's not one this year, but when is that, and in the past week, they did present that, so...
They ain't got an answer on that, for sure.
Yeah, there's just things like that that I...
I just, I just can't see, given, in my opinion, that's a lot of money we're putting out. We put a lot of money into fire department.
We do, and they're putting more and more into our fire protection.
But they're taking, the city's taking, eventually taking county property that we will have to though.
Have you brought up publicly about them going, where do they go with those wildfires that, $10,000, $20,000, way?
Ask them at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, what else on your, on your list there?
I just want to call for some things to y'all's attention. The rate that we pay to the Texas County and District Retirement System is currently 13.29%. It's going down to... It's going down to twelve point six seven. That will be effective in January, but that's such a tiny little increase, it's gonna save us about three thousand dollars.
Tiny little decrease.
Yes, decrease, a small decrease. It will save us countywide three thousand dollars, but it is going down.
That's all?
That's all. So, yeah, I did the calculation. It's only for nine months. So that's, you have to do the calculation.
And that's based at our current wages?
So it's overall?
Yeah, it'll obviously be an increase with the rates.
With the ten percent.
With the ten percent. All right, at least that's better than an increase, like we had for the year.
That's why I wanted to bring you to your attention.
Anything else on your list?
That's all salaries. I did get an email from Jerry Ward, there's six volunteer firefighters, not five, so their request to increase that, instead of being thirty thousand, will be thirty-six thousand.
Yeah, I heard him say five, and I was doing the math, I never did the math, though. So, yeah, he left one out, so really, there's, you got an extra twenty percent on top of that.
The IRS mileage rate has increased to sixty-two point five cents. That's affected July the first. It's the first time since two thousand and eleven that the IRS has increased it in the middle of the year. So we...
What is it currently, fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight point five.
Fifty-eight five.
They've jumped it up four cents, that's all? That's a gallon of gas.
That's what I couldn't figure.
Inflation, they don't like it.
I thought it would be a more generous increase than that.
I think that those were my main questions, Judge Lee.
We need to also, Barbara, talk about the position that we've talked about adding to the maintenance barn as well, already. What did you want to call that? We were talking about to help Terry and Jeff Cates out there at the maintenance barn.
I don't, I don't know what your plan is for that, so that would be to y'all to make those decisions. I don't know.
All right, fill me in on this, what you're talking about.
Well, we want to add, we're talking about adding a job out there to the maintenance barn to help with paperwork and help with those guys, you know, do all their phone calls and go chase parts and whatnot. They gotta go long, you can't drop, you know, drop stuff off, pick it up, and just to...
What's not getting done?
Well, they spend a lot of time on the phone. Like the other day, Jeff's on the phone two and a half hours over the AT&amp;T deal when he could have been out there working on a piece of equipment, and it's getting more... You know, the harder to get parts, you know, he's having to chase down, and like right now, I got a gearbox that we can't find, it's, he's trying to find it and everything, and when he should be out there working on cop, sheriff's cars or the county equipment. But, you know, he has to do a lot of phone calls right now, just trying to find parts, you know?
Yeah, I think that'll bring him up quite a bit where he can continue working and, you know, not have to be on call chasing, chasing down stuff like that.
So you need a whole other position out there to help him with that?
I think it would be a good idea.
And I'm totally against that. I don't see the cause for it, and us commissioners could help find some of the parts, especially when they're looking for our stuff anyway. So that's, I don't think that's needed at all. And I ain't saying they don't do a great job, they do a great job. I just didn't think that was called for at all. I don't see it, I'm against it.
And Terry's the one now that's kind of doing the...
He's sending POs.
And how'd that come about?
Jeff just, you know, he just...
He'll tell Terry and Terry to go and get it.
Like I said, it works out a lot better. It keeps ease on everybody.
Terry's better at paperwork?
Well, no, they do both, do paperwork, but Terry kind of takes the phone calls and get a PO and stuff. Or, you know, Jeff will tell him to get a PO, and he'll call in Barbara's office and get a PO. Is that right?
Yes, but let me give y'all some background. When I came to work at the county, Carl Johnson had allowed the county barn to do their own purchase orders. And we, and I don't think that that meets the requirements, because it wasn't coming through the auditor's office, but I worked with that system, because I did not want to come in here and make major changes. And so we worked with that system for quite some, in fact, until February of this year, but the system did not work, because we didn't get the information that we needed. We had trouble getting just invoices turned in, they would be turned in late, we would have late fees, we'd get purchases without purchase orders, which you know that violates state statutes. If you make a purchase without a purchase order, Commissioner's Court could require whoever made the, whoever made the order to pay for that personally. So that's the reason, one of the reasons why I didn't like it like that. But we worked through it, and then Commissioner Appleby, I believe, had volunteered kind of to take over the oversight of the maintenance barn, because his, you know, his shop is just right there. And so in February, he made the decision to close down those purchase orders within the maintenance barn, because it just has not worked. We had worked on it, and worked on it, and at that time, he also moved that work to Terry Weaver. Terry has done an excellent job. He is kind to my employees, he doesn't get mad and demand certain things at certain times, and we are very responsive. I don't know that there's ever a time that you call my office to get a purchase order, that you don't get one right then or within about fifteen minutes. And so whatever they need to do out there is at your discretion, the pleasure of the commissioners. But I do want to tell you, with regard, there was some discussion of purchasing. Judge Lee asked me on my first day, if you remember, Judge, we met in the hall. You wanted to know about purchasing, could I manage that, and then the signatures? So we've taken that purchasing on, we are meeting the state and federal requirements. Not all the federal ones, as you saw Monday with the seatbelt wall. There are some things like that, but we are meeting those. We've got the procedures in place, we've got, we've implemented those, and I think that purchasing needs to stay in the auditor's office. So whatever you decide to do with the maintenance barn, I would request that you don't, don't assume that we're gonna reopen purchase orders out there, because that's not, I don't believe that that's acceptable, and that that meets the requirements of the law. You would still need to call my office and get those purchase orders. And that needs to be done, I want to stress to you, before you make the purchase. And that's the reason why we tell you, just give us your estimate, because we know that even if you call and they tell you it's four dollars and ninety-nine cents, there might be shipping, you know, there could be, now, there could be fuel surcharge, different things like that, but I just want to bring that to your attention as you're making these decisions.
So some of the purchases are made by the commissioners, some are made by Jeff and Terry? In other words, you could get a call for a PO from any of these four or any of those two?
Well, Jeff does not call, he rarely calls anymore.
Terry's doing that?
Yes. But now, when we're talking about salaries, I mean, they are the highest-paid hourly employees in the county, and they're spending clerical time on the phone. But now, when they make those phone calls, it'd be like if you asked me to get that gearbox or anybody in my office, we wouldn't know anything about that. You need someone who knows, you know, what to say when you call, what size is it, what gear is it? I don't know what length, what length, those types of things. So there's reasons why they need to make those calls, as opposed to, you know, we need oil or we need tires, or, you know, we get the number off and you call, and those types of things. So that's why I'm saying it's at their discretion, y'all's discretion as a board to make those decisions. But the purchasing piece of that
Right.
needs to stay in our's.
But Jeff is, he did, you know, on the budget, you know, he asked for that truck and everything. There is a used one, but it's not available right now.
This is the crane truck?
Yeah, seventy thousand with a used one. That's, you know, he said he would like to, you know, maybe put some money in it or wait till next year to make that big purchase, or because you might be able to find one, a new one. But you are not gonna find a new truck right now, because they're not... I've tried to get a pull truck, and they're not available for a little... Ford hadn't started making them again, and the box and the crane is gonna be the biggest cost of that truck. And he also called about a day cab. The day cab, they got some used ones coming in the next few months. They're, they have four hundred thousand miles on them, they're about seventy, seventy-five thousand dollars. Or you can wait and put the new ones in in January and give a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a brand-new truck. And so I don't, you know, to me, if you get that new truck, that truck be here a long time. You know, the four hundred thousand mile truck, you don't know what you're getting. You don't know how long it may last, a hundred thousand more miles or whatever, but we need to, we've got to get a dependable truck. And he's working on that, and that's, you know, like I said, he was, they'd be doing work and doing that, but that's what he said about the truck. He said he could put some in or wait till to get a buy, a new one.
What do you mean by he'll put some in? Put some in what?
Like I said, he said maybe put some money aside this year, then next year or whatever. I said, well, if we're gonna do it, we might as well just go ahead and just buy it all at one time.
Jeff didn't have enough extra money in his budget to do that? So I don't know what he means by he's gonna put some in.
Well, no, he said, we ask if we would put some back, like we did the haul, the day cab.
Have we not, have we not, do we have any money in the budget for that cab? That truck that you're talking about?
We put seventy, I think it was seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
We were hoping to be able to get a truck and a trailer for seventy-five, but...
So will either roll that over and add to it?
Right.
It's in our own budgets, and the road, each precinct has eighteen thousand.
My opinion is, you get a new one, it's got a, I don't know, got a good warranty come with it, and I just think it's, you know, for, let's see, forty, fifty thousand more, just buy a whole new truck, brand-new truck.
So I have a question. So the hundred and twenty thousand, would that cover the truck and the box and crane and everything that goes with it?
Oh, I don't know, he's gonna get some more quotes on that. He said he didn't, he got somebody come calling.
This is for the day cab, this is for the pull truck, for the big trailers.
That one twenty is for the pull truck. When you set up money aside for...
A big eighteen-wheeler. Jeff was talking about a used, a nice, good rebuilt crane truck, seventy-five thousand, seventy to seventy-five. Yeah, and I'm for buying Jeff and him a used truck, a good used, rebuilt.
One is a specialty truck with that crane on it. One is like a big Kenworth eighteen-wheeler.
Yeah, a diesel.
Just a cab, not a trailer.
Kenworth eighteen-wheeler is the one that we have in this year's budget.
Yes, but we hadn't found one, and what we are finding now is the price has gone up, so they're like four hundred, it's just like Jeff found this week, the one with four hundred thousand miles on it, you're looking at seventy-five thousand. Well, you can get a brand-new one, which has got an automatic transmission, and all in it for a hundred and twenty. And so that might be our best bet to go, that way we've got warranty on it for a long time. We've got, it's an automatic, it's not near as hard. With as many people as we've got driving that truck, it's hard on those transmissions.
We done replaced it once.
We done replaced, rebuilt the one in the...
Peterbilt.
Peterbilt, year four last, and it's, one of my guys was in it the other day, and they said it was whining again, kind of like it did before, so, I mean, we maybe fixing to have to do something there.
So you're saying, keep the seventy-five thousand you've got in the budget and add another fifty to it?
I think we need to look at it, I really do.
That and add seventy-five thousand for a crane truck?
Well, I don't think we need to do both.
He said, he just said, you know, this, he's not, maybe next year we may look at the crane truck. He said that'd be optimal. It'd be better.
Okay, what would you like to put in this budget?
Well, I'd like to get more information, see what's really gonna cost us. You know, he's gonna, they gotta supposed to call him back.
They told us they could give us a bid on it, and they usually don't extend them out that far, but they would bid it, put the price on it. If we don't want it when it comes in, they don't care, because they'll have it sold to the next guy, so.
So you wanted to put a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the budget?
Put our name on one that's coming in January.
Well, now, keep in mind, it's something that costs a hundred and twenty thousand, we're gonna have to actually bid that.
Bid it out.
Unless they're a member of one of those purchasing cooperatives.
Yeah, I don't know what co-ops they are. I don't know, we bought from them before, though, so.
That does meet what we need for budget, which is what we need right now.
Yeah, that'd be a good figure.
While you're put, we can always remove it later, for now, why don't you put a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for capital outlay, which encompasses the existing seventy or seventy-five, whatever you have in the budget, and adds another fifty to it? Now, that doesn't mean we have to do it, but I want you to have it in there while you're accumulating all this.
I just think it's a better idea, go, because you don't know if that transmission of that four hundred thousand mile truck's gonna last another hundred or...
And I've been there and done that.
I thought the other day that we've been talking about these ARPA funds, I just wondered if we could use maybe some of them to get the truck and another trailer. We could use another trailer, I mean, when everybody working on roads and all.
Do you have Mark here next week or the week after?
Yeah, and I was gonna ask him.
So start looking your wish list together as you're thinking about that. And as far as, as far as what you've brought up about a position for them, y'all need to talk about that and come to a consensus and let Barbara know.
Well, if they go and get Jeff Cates and Terry out of the office, where they have more time in the shop to work, and not spend so much time in that office on their computer and phone, if you guys could estimate, how much time do you think they spend a day in that office? I mean, I have quite a bit of time taken up, they could be out doing something else. So that's my thing.
We all talk about that, and we need to, we can always plug that in later. But obviously, as Barbara puts this, Barbara's gonna be working feverishly after, starting probably next week.
Start with that. I do have one more question, just a suggestion I want to make to you. The ten percent increase across the board that we're talking about, of course, y'all would get those for your roadhands, but what about the maintenance barn? Do you want to do those all as a group, the roadhands and the maintenance barn?
Let's raise that question a moment, would you say?
Okay, the ten percent increase, so you'll have that to allocate to your roadhands. You can give everyone ten percent as you deem necessary. Do you want to include the maintenance barn in that and allow you to use some of those funds to bring your roadhands up a little more, or to increase the maintenance barn a little more? What do y'all want to do with that? Because y'all manage the maintenance barn.
I say give them both a ten percent raise. They're just two people, and we'll just give them a full ten percent.
Just like everybody else, ten percent across the board.
Yeah. Within your departments, again, we're gonna do, we're gonna do this for everybody. It's up to them if they want to give flat ten percent.
It's a little different with our road crew.
But if they want, if they want to play with those numbers within their department, let's...
No.
This is a department that you may all manage.
Well, I think he's giving you the answer there, it sounds like they're okay with just doing ten percent. The, gosh, what was the one? I still haven't gotten a call back from Robert Ralston, who is on vacation. He said he'd get with me this week about the question that I had there regarding his two Bayless. And I think the answer that I will give him is, you got ten percent, you allocate it any way you want to. If you want to use it to raise one up, whether they're both even, do whatever you want. And when he calls me, I'll tell him that, and I guess that's just those two guys, is all there.
Well, I got that assistance, the court administrator, Kelly.
That's right, they got three people. So they'll get, but let's make that one department, we give them, we give them ten percent, he allocates it however he wants. What else you got, Barbara?
That's a wonderful question. I mean, we've made a lot of decisions.
Yeah, that's a lot of, a lot of decision-making.
Of course, Valerie Hart will be taken out, you know, that's due management account, the people who work here.
Well, again, I think it's been a, I don't know if there's ever been a ten percent raise given. I think this is, I won't say it's unprecedented, because I don't know, but I think this crazy inflation is unprecedented. I think these, this crazy inflation is unprecedented, for, at least in our lifetimes, I think you all have done the right thing, I appreciate everybody's input in the audience, as well as up here, I think this is fair, I think that, I think we should be proud of that, and I think we should be ready to defend it, and I, I think that people will understand. Okay, is there anything else within your budgets that you want to talk about at this point, that Barbara needs to know about? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, again, Barbara starts next week on assembling all this, and we'll be trying to have that done by the, what is your target date, Barbara?
I'd like it to be done around July the 20th or so.
Okay.
Because we'll get the, the final ballot from the appraisal district around the 20th, last year, I think, July 23rd, and then, we'll be, you know, tax rate.
Okay, you know, and then, little things that we need to add in there, if you think about them, let me know, let Barbara know, I'd like for you to let me know, just so I'm aware of it, but, you know, she puts this stuff together, but we'll try to make those prompt for her sake, in her department.
I do have one question with regards to the tax rate, there's a new requirement that we're supposed to advertise when we're going to vote on the proposed tax rate, so, I was going to err on the side of caution, and there's certain verbiage you have to put, so if the tax rate could possibly go up, I was just going to put possible increase to tax rate, to give y'all the option then, once you see the rates, because that has to go in the newspaper on August the 1st, or the New Year's 2 that day, and y'all aren't going to vote on it.
On August the 1st, well, we got a lot of time, I think, to put it down and then to think about it.
I'm sorry?
You actually think we're going to have to increase?
No, I think that's a decision for you to make.
I mean, I mean, if we don't have to, I mean, I don't...
Right, but the thing...
But she's just saying she needs to work, she needs to word it, I know that your best intentions are to keep the tax rate no higher than it is right now, but depending upon how she words it, she removes your flexibility to do that.
Yeah, just word it the best way you can.
Now, if you put that word possible in there, maybe you get folks...
There's no good way to word that, and we'll get the calls anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah, I would probably put possible, just so that you have all, all your bases covered, and certainly...
Shouldn't have to get so many options.
All right, anything else, anybody?
I'd like a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Jeff Parchman to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Second by Jimmy Parker, anything else, all in favor, say aye.